It'll improve.
But Alicia gets to see the citizens.
There you go.
I'm sure it probably is uncomfortable when they're backed, straight back to you. They don't get this in terms of.
Good evening. It's May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. It is seven o'clock and I'm calling this regular Battleground City Council meeting to order. Please rise if you're able for the pledge.
I am the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, given the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lillie, roll, please.
Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Kipers.
Present.
Councilmember Farrar.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And the clerk is present. That concludes the roll.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda approval. Any discussion from council?
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, second by Councilmember Farrar. On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Brings us to summary reports and presentations. For those that are here for the first time, these are report outs on boards that the council sits on on behalf of council. So we'll start off. We have mosquito. Report tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Our scheduled meeting is June. However, I am part of the Policy and Procedure Committee, and we met last Tuesday for two hours, made some headway, and we're meeting again tomorrow for two hours. So that's all I have to report right now.
All right. Thank you. Alls I know is we're better off than DC because they bite during the day. Councilmember Farrar.
For the CDBG, they don't meet until June.
So you want to report out on Echo?
Nothing. No report, yeah.
Yeah, Urban, it does have a, it's, most of the meetings starts the beginning of the year. EMS two, Councilmember Overholzer.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had a few action items on the agenda. We went ahead and approved for Chairwoman Marshall to sign the interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with the city of Vancouver that allows us to enter into that partnership and piggyback with them. So we went ahead and approved that. We also approved an administrative board composition. So we have a work group currently going right now as graciously our city manager Chris is on. And so as we phase out of needing the work group, we wanted to have contract administration and oversight. And so not only the board, but some administrative oversight on that. And so we went ahead and approved that board that'll consist of six members, the three chiefs from the three different fire districts that make up EMS two, medical program director, local hospital administrator, and a CRESSA director or fill-in alternate of that director. And then we also approved a contract negotiation team. And that consists of Clark County Legal, Clark County Contract Administration, and the three chiefs from the fire districts three, six, and CCFR. So we are actually making some headway there for EMS two and, and this year going forward, Recovery for Emergency Medical Services.
All right. Thank you for that. Did I miss anybody else? That'll bring us to the mayor's report, and I have a couple meetings to report out on. The first one's a Regional Transportation Council. For those of you that are driving five oh three, you may have noticed the lights are a little more synchronized. They're using AI technology to synchronize all the lights. It's a, it's currently, it's just kind of in an experimental phase, something they may roll out to the rest of the county. But if you've driven five oh three recently, you may have noticed your travel time a little easier. So that study will wrap up here in the next couple of months, but the preliminary data looks pretty promising. So once we have that, I'll, I'll bring that to council for your edification. Also, CTRAN board meeting. Not a lot of business in that one. However, there was a presentation again on the current, and it's still on path and passed through a budget. So still on track for September rollout on current in Battleground. Now bring us to proclamations. Tonight's my pleasure to proclaim a police week. Proclamations are statements of policy, are not statements of policy, but are a means by which the city can recognize an event group or individual. As part of ceremonial duties, the mayor, the mayor's charged with approval proclamations that has her discretion and reserves the right to decline any proclamation request, as well as the right to make exceptions to those guidelines and procedures. Individual council members will not issue proclamations, and requests for a proclamation should be directed to the mayor or city clerk. So with that, and part of the reason for this police week, and we will recognize two officers at the next meeting, but since police week is in May, we had two life-saving events by our police force. So what really wanted to draw attention to that? We don't always see our police in that role, but they are heavily trained in that. So wanted to make sure that we recognize them for that. So whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Battleground Police Department, and whereas there have been numerous assaults against law enforcement officers resulting in several injuries, and whereas the first recorded death in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty was honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund annual candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas May fifteenth is designated Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Troy McCoy, Mayor of the city of Battleground, formally designate May eleventh through seventeenth as Police Week in the city of Battleground, Washington, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities nationwide. Janet, if you want to come get this for us. Second proclamations for National Public Works Week. Mr. Hersick here. We'll have him approach the dais. After I read this and accept the award, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities, and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Battleground. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Battleground to gain knowledge of and to maintain progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-five marks a sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Troy McCoy, Mayor of the city of Battleground, formally designate May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Works Week in the city of Battleground, Washington. I urge all citizens to join in with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Okay, that brings us to presentations, and Mr. Hersick's up again. Looks like we have a new employee, yeah?
Unfortunately, our employee is a last-second scratch, so we'll have to reschedule.
That'll bring us to citizens communications then. So we will now open the meeting for citizens communication. You grab that. Individuals are limited to three minutes to provide comments. Total time for public comments shall not exceed thirty minutes. It's an opportunity to hear from members of the public in a limited public forum, not an opportunity for extended comments or dialogue. Please refrain from derogatory remarks, personal attacks, especially in this season's campaign speeches and applause. All of the city council desires to allow public comment. The city's business must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. Please direct your comments to the mayor. Council may not be able to respond to individual comments. We may refer you to a staff member for assistance. There are business cards at the podium for our city manager, and if you have handouts, please also hand them to the clerk to my left. Ms. Lee, do we have anybody on Zoom would like to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then that'll bring us to those signed up in person. It looks like, well, we have a lot of people, but we won't be over thirty minutes. We'll get three minutes. So first up, Win Gersich. And your time should be up on the screen. Welcome. Wherever, wherever's more comfortable for you, just make sure the mic is on. Some people find it easier to sit down, so we thought we might try that.
Hi, my name is Win Gersich, and I came here tonight to discuss what's in our water. And it's really kind of amazing because we drink toilet-to-tap and how they checked the sewer water for the COVID virus. So this study here from Russell Blaylock says studies have shown that by three injections of the COVID vaccine, a person's immune system is virtually destroyed. You have vapes. And this is one of the articles that is actually from the Center of Disease Control Studies, and it says US FDA's and CDC delayed the health advisory on COVID nineteen mRNA vaccines myocarditis for months and failed to issue a black box warning for years. And they show on Fauci's own website that it causes all kinds of problems, death, Guillain-Barre disease, acute myocarditis, all kinds of good stuff, strokes, and, and this is what's in your vaccines. And I'm putting this on public record, so anybody can really check it out and see what you took and put in your arm. I also put on all of the patents on the COVID vaccine on your public records, so you can see what they put in there. They're almost like computer parts, but there's, they put parasites in it. And this is something, this is why they hid about ivermectin, but there's other things you can use, like olive leaf oil, you know, wormwood, things like that, that can take the parasites out. So one of the things, and I really respect the firemen and policemen and our first responders, and I showed them the book, Beyond COVID Nineteen by Bryan Adams, because he said what we can do to survive. I read that book, and because I did what he said, I lived through it. My leg turned flame and red, and it had clots coming out of the side. And I did what his book said, and I think you all need to read it. There's, it's also on Audible, because if you get any of these symptoms, you'll know what to do to save your own life and not go to the doctors. The other thing is about fluoride and about the PFOAs from Teflon. This city could have the garbage companies pick up every Teflon pot upon their recycling garbage and take it away, because they're continuing, every time you use these pots and pans, you're putting PFOAs down the drain. So what Vancouver did was they raised the allowable levels of PFOAs, and they're not going to fix it. So when they can't meet the standards, they just raise them. And this is very damaging, because this stuff is really poison. And here is a YouTube video you can all check out, how one company secretly poisoned the planet. And this YouTube video talks about Teflon and fluoride used in the atom bomb. And of course, our mayor, I gave him the book, and he should give you a book report on the fluoride deception, because that's what it talks about, the making of the atom bomb and why fluoride was covered up by the Mellon Institute. The Mellon owned the steel mill and paid Keating Laboratories to cover it up. That's why we're drinking poison today, and we can stop this if people gather together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Sharon. Okay, could we get her microphone? Thank you, Rob. Got to make sure you're famous on YouTube.
Mr. Mayor and council members, President Sharon Woodkey, the Battleground seniors. With me today is Sandra Sanowski, Vice President. She comes to us from Wisconsin, been with us for a couple of years now, bringing fresh ideas and tech skills. We're very fortunate to have her in our group. But we're here today for a couple of reasons. Number one, to thank you all for your working with Battleground senior citizens in the past year and helping us navigate the renovation and growing pains. We are now close to over six hundred and fifty participants. Without your patience and your counsel, we would not be here today to issue you an invitation, which you all have received on your desk there, to our fiftieth anniversary party. Now, my board and I differ on this. I'm calling it a birthday party, but they're all calling it an anniversary party. We hope that you will save the date and be able to stop by and enjoy a barbecue, an ice cream sundae, or a birthday cupcake. Check out the event centers, Molton Falls Room and the Wooden Creek Room, where the eleven of our currently supported activities are being displayed Monday, June twenty-third, eleven to two. We cannot thank you enough for all you are doing for the senior community. They see it and appreciate it, and all of you. Thank you very much. Can I save that time for next time? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Looking forward to your fiftieth birthday party, Sharon. Okay. Next up, Marie, and I can't get the first. Yeah? Is that, okay, sorry about that.
Boop, it works. Yay. Oof, okay. It's going, so I'll go. Tonight, we heard a couple of proclamations, which was super nice, I guess. But last year, I kind of recall the suppression of some proclamations, specifically those that pertain to marginalized community members and that would generally give visibility to the disenfranchised. Last year, there was a big fuss regarding Battleground City Pride proclamation, right? Nobody wanted to do the thing. Well, some of you want to do the thing, but we sat here, we heard mistruths, we heard misinformation from residents of the city, from non-residents of the city, and then from people who have no real affiliation with the city. I cannot get my distance right. I apologize. We even heard community members read Bible passages that quoted the death penalty for people like me. people like me and people like the people in the audience. It sucked. Trans and queer members of the community were subjected to bigotry, hostility. Some of us were verbally accosted outside and threatened with violence. That's me, that happened. Just just for the same people that were speaking out against this, just because they didn't want the city of Battleground to acknowledge June as Pride Month. In fact, on October first, the same two people that tried to assault me here assaulted a woman and pulled a firearm on her and held her at gunpoint in front of a Planned Parenthood in the city of Vancouver, right? These are the people that you count down to, the people that you gave into, the bigots full of hate and the bigots full of ignorance, who would resort to physically striking a woman and pulling a firearm on another one, just because she chose to show up somewhere to get free healthcare. Sorry, that was a really shitty day. I just need a second here. These are the type of people that are pushing to end pride, to end queer and trans equality, and to be honest, our very existence. So what message do you send to my three children who attend our schools when you refuse to acknowledge a specific group of people during a time period that has been dedicated to their struggles and to their accomplishments? You don't have to answer, it's rhetorical. For the people that voted against the proclamation, rhetorical means like I ask it, but I already know the answer.
Thank you. Next up, Jessica Cole.
Good evening, city council. I'm Jessica Cole. And I seen the work of our public employees with proclamations tonight. They play a role in supporting our community, and these kind of acknowledgements are meaningful. That's why it's troubling to think that this longstanding tradition could be eliminated entirely. The issue isn't that people in our community no longer care about proclamations. The issue is how the process has been applied and how certain groups, especially protected classes, have faced additional barriers with others that while others have not. As elected officials, your role is to represent all residents of Battleground, not just the majority, the loudest, or those whose opinions mirror your own. Proclamations have long been one of the few ways the city affirms that commitment to inclusion and recognition. As I've said before, good governance doesn't mean closing doors for future leaders. Ending proclamations doesn't solve a problem, it avoids acknowledging and confronting the real one. Saying we don't want them anymore without addressing why, that is, doesn't reflect transparency. Proclamations didn't just fall out of use, they stopped after a protected class was denied recognition. In response, the mayor halted all proclamations to avoid legal and ethical risks. To now frame this simply as a procedural cleanup is misleading. If we truly value transparency, kindness and fairness, the answer isn't to erase the tool, is to repair the process and use it more fairly. Personally, proclamations matter to me because they signal belonging. They say you are seen, your story matters, you're part of the community. They also introduced me to causes and people I might not have known otherwise. They foster care, awareness and a sense of interconnectedness that strengthens us all. Please consider what it means to take that option away, not just from this council, but from future councils and from the communities who look to their city to feel seen. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Jessica. Next up, David Terry.
Hi, David Terry, I'm a Battleground resident. I wanted to reiterate what Jessica just really nicely said about proclamations in that I think our system is broken. If we have wonderful proclamations, it makes the community proud, it makes people who receive it proud, and it's sad to me that we will say yes to some proclamations and no to others. So we need to fix our system. If one group gets heard, all groups get heard. And I'm kind of ashamed of our council for what we did on the Pride Proclamation last year. We had several years of Pride Proclamations with no issues, and then, for some reason, this council decided that it was not a good idea yet last year. So I hope we'll reconsider the process that we use to approve proclamation so that people could, you know, our our community can be proud of themselves, no matter who they are. So I'd really appreciate if the council would listen to advice, listen to public opinion and revamp the process for approving them. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Good evening, council. As you already know, my name is Ally Strapason. I am still a resident, but no longer a small business owner in the city limits, which is predominantly why you haven't seen much of me for the past four to five months. However, that is not the reason I am before you tonight. I am here to speak about the council's proposal to eliminate all proclamations, apparently to avoid legal and ethical issues after the debacle that occurred over the issuance of the Pride Proclamation last June. This if everyone can't have it, then nobody gets it approach is childish, extremely short-sighted and dangerous to our community. We can look at history to see how reactionary decisions like this play out in communities. During the nineteen sixties, all over southern states, towns and cities quietly and not so quietly decided to not just close their community pools indefinitely, but to fill them in and bury them, rather than acknowledging, welcoming and integrating with their black neighbors. A large number of those communities continue to not have community pools, and the long-lasting losses to the entire community in those areas are still felt to this very day, some sixty-plus years later. I don't see the proposed action of eliminating all proclamations as any different. When a decision like this is made, it not only is an unwelcoming symbol to the community, it is an act of erasure of members of this community, of the community. And as a deeply caring citizen of this community who strives to welcome all neighbors, I put my focus on embracing, not erasing. I would hope that the leaders of this great city would not only want to, but actually do the same. In this regard, the passage I have heard time and time again throughout my childhood or since my childhood from my pastor father now rings very loudly in my ears. So I will close with Jesus's words from Matthew twenty-five forty. What you do to the least of these, my brethren, you do unto me. So council, will you embrace or erase the least of these in our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Next up, Bev Jones.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity. As the self-delegated cheerleader for Battleground, I am here to speak in favor of proclamations. And as we've seen tonight, they're wonderful things. And I do have to say, I'm disappointed in this council for the decision that was made on a previous vote, especially for a protected class of citizens. I support the halt of the proclamations at the time, but it's time to move on. And as we've seen, it's time to move on, it's time to grow up. It's time to love all of our fellow citizens, not to spread hate. I encourage you to continue the option of the proclamations, and as we've seen tonight, they're wonderful. It's really an important part for our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bev.
You all right? Hello, my name is Simon, and I'm a resident of Battleground. I took time off work to be here because this is important to me. I want to speak in support of keeping proclamations as part of our city's governance, not out of tradition, but out of, but because they matter. Proclamations are not empty gestures. They're more than just words on paper, they're a reflection of our community's values. They affirm that everyone in Battleground belongs, especially those who have been historically left out. When our city recognizes marginalized groups, it sends a powerful message. You are seen, you are valued, you are a part of this city. That's what civic belonging looks like. Proclamations also provide public accountability. They put our city's comment, city's commitments on record. And that matters, especially when trust in institutions is fragile. These moments of recognition help us measure whether we're living up to the values we say we hold. And they're an opportunity for courageous leadership. It's easy to stay silent. But proclaiming support publicly and intentionally takes integrity. It shows that Battleground isn't afraid to lead with heart. Yes, proclamations are symbolic, but symbols carry weight. They educate, they raise awareness, they build bridges between communities. They connect us to each other. And to the history and traditions that make Battleground what it is. To eliminate proclamations entirely would be a deliberate step backwards. It would say that our city is no longer interested in celebrating milestones, lifting up community voices, or standing for something greater than itself. I hope you'll choose to do the right thing and choose inclusion. I hope you'll choose visibility, and I hope you'll choose to keep proclamations as a tool to honor, educate and unite this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Is there anybody else in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, with that, I will close citizens communication portion of the meeting. That brings us to the consent agenda. Counsel, does anybody need to remove anything?
Motion to approve the agenda in its entirety is presented.
Sync it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Farrar, second by Councilmember Kipers to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? This is unanimously. That brings us to our first portion of business, the Governance Manual and Deputy City Manager Upper, Harrier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Governance Manual is set by the city council and establishes the procedural rules by which the city council functions, other than those specified in the state code. Governance Manual is intended to be a living document. By that I mean it can and has been amended on multiple occasions since its original adoption. It was most recently amended in May of last year through Resolution two thousand four oh two. During the council communications portions of the April twenty-first city council meeting, Councilmember Overholtz requested a conversation at a future meeting regarding modification of the Governance Manual as it relates to proclamations. Councilmembers at that time expressed a willingness to entertain that conversation. Governance Manual, Chapter one point C point twenty-one, which was attached to staff report on this matter, describes the city council's process for consideration of proclamations. Staff request the city council discuss the matter and then provide appropriate direction for staff. In the event the city council does wish to amend the Governance Manual, staff would place a resolution on a future council agenda for consideration. That concludes our presentation.
Okay, do we have anything set from law? We just go straight in? Okay, I'll open up the floor. Councilmember Overholtz, this is your item, so I'll let you lead it off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it, you know, I think it's come to everyone's awareness now. This is the first time that we've done a proclamation in this city for eleven months, almost eleven months. And I, as much as I applaud the mayor for sticking to his guns on that, where he did make a statement that if we weren't going to recognize the proclamation last year and for pride, that we weren't going to recognize any proclamations. But I I wanted to point out, as many people have tonight with their public comment, the importance of a proclamation and why I feel it was important to be entertaining these throughout the last year. In July, we had Americans with Disabilities Awareness, we had Breast Cancer Awareness in October, we had Black History Month in February, Women's History Month in March. Just last month, we had Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. And some of these, which I just named are protected classes, and we chose not to recognize any of those for proclamations. And I would guess that some of those were asked of you. So to the point where somebody made a comment earlier tonight that if if we weren't going to do one, we shouldn't do all, or something to that effect. And I just think it's odd that that was the policy that we took up, that one proclamation didn't get put through based on a vote according to our Governance Manual. Therefore, no proclamations will be issued for the year. And that, to me, just kind of shows bias against any other group who may want a proclamation, for that matter. And it wasn't until I brought this forward that we actually look at proclamations again. So I'm kind of glad to see that we're looking at that again. My guess would be we wouldn't be looking at that if I wouldn't have brought it forward and only bring it forward to make a point that you have the power to to do those or not do those, and it is your option, it's according to the Governance Manual. And that's why I feel like we probably shouldn't be doing proclamations at all. If we're not going to do them, why why would we have that option to do them? And you've exercised your right to not do them for eleven months. Why would we change all of a sudden? That's my point.
Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. So I'll speak to this a little bit. Proclamations are on behalf of the mayor, it's not on behalf of council. The reason we ended up the way we were is because two years ago, we had a council member bring up during the June proclamation that she had an issue with it and thought it to be controversial. So we had a mayor at the time that said, okay, fine, there was nothing in there, we put something in the Governance Manual to appease that, and which we had never had a problem with since I've been on this council since two thousand and twelve. We did proclamations for all of that stuff, different things that you talked about. Those were all done by the mayor, not by council. Council did not have a say in it. The problem was is when we gave council a say. When we gave council the opportunity to interject our own feelings, instead of letting the mayor do what the mayor does, and those proclamations tonight did not say anything about the council. They did not say on behalf of the city council, said on behalf of Mayor Troy McCoy from the city of Battleground. So there are very few things that the mayor gets to do, one of them being proclamations. And we, as a council, want to take that away because it doesn't feel right to us for certain ones. And I think we're stepping over a line, if you go back to the ones that you just mentioned, if we do those, but we don't do other ones, then we, as the government, are picking the winners and losers here. And so I agree with the mayor that, you know, the reason we didn't do them is because there's probably some legal stuff there. And I know most people, you know, don't care until till you're getting sued, but I can look to a lot of cities around us that have settled lawsuits over this kind of stuff. And if you think that that's the appropriate use of the public's money, because I want to interject my own feelings into something that has nothing to do with me, it has to do with the mayor. Now, if you're mayor, you can choose not to do proclamations. I haven't seen one not do it, but but that's solely up to the mayor. You can say, no, I don't want to do proclamations, I, you know, I don't feel like doing them. Or you could pick and choose, and you could take the risk of violating, you know, First Amendment, potentially, you know, some other things. You could try that and see, see how it goes. And when your attorney tells you, hey, you shouldn't do that, then you'll be personally liable, just like we've seen some of the other councils around us have those issues. So the issue wasn't proclamations. The issue is we allowed council to start weighing in on proclamations. And when it was, when it was solely the responsibility of the mayor, and it has been, and it, and then we put it in our Governance Manual and, you know, we want to look at it and determine. But like I said last year, in our Governance Manual, it says three votes, three votes, that's a minority. There is nobody that would take that and say that that's appropriate anywhere when it comes to voting. They say a minority should outvote a majority. And so I think it should, if we want to talk the Governance Manual, I think what should be in the Governance Manual is nothing to do with if I get butt hurt because the mayor is doing some proclamation that I don't like. Don't like it, go sit down there. If you don't like it, you can stay outside. It's a mayor's proclamation. You don't have to sit in this meeting to participate in it if you think that you're participating in it. But I'm not participating in it. I participated in it for two years when I served as mayor. And those were my proclamations. They had my signature on them. When Mayor De La Sondro was mayor, they were his proclamations. Mayor Johnson, his proclamations. Mayor Cortez, his proclamations, not the councils. We've decided that we want to make them the councils, and that's not the appropriate way to do it. But that's just, that's my opinion on it. I think we need to take it out of the governance manual. You know, that was put in on a knee jerk reaction to, you know, what if I don't like this? Don't like it, go sit down there and step outside. Then you don't have to hear it. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
I'm just going to chime in here. I, I take issue with Councilmember Overholzer's comments. The only reason it's on the agenda because you said you wanted to remove proclamations. You said it to me personally more than once to now raise the issue that, oh, thanks to me, now we have proclamations. That's not the case at all, and you know that. I, I would, I still stand by, and I would like to get legal's opinion that, uh, what we have in our governance manual is problematic at best and potentially keeps us liable at worst. So, uh, from the term controversial to a minority, uh, you essentially are censoring you as a government, somebody's right to speech, which I believe there's amendment on. So, uh, Mr. Harper, I think we've had conversations about a year ago about this. Um, so I was hoping maybe you could give me a refresher because I actually haven't talked to you about it in a year. So I'm sure my memory is a little fuzzy.
All right. Well, uh, good evening, mayor and council members. You're correct. There is legal peril, uh, depending on how a municipality manages the proclamation process. And I'll give you just a little bit of, I guess, further insight into that. One principle of First Amendment law that really plays into this is the difference between uh, a person's speech and governmental speech. Uh, the First Amendment applies directly to personal speech. Governmental speech, on the other hand, is pretty much not regulated by the First Amendment. And what that means, uh, mayor and council members, is that the city can adopt proclamations uh, or decline proclamations as it sees fit. I mean, you have, uh, the ability to pick and choose proclamations. Uh, they may or may not affect protected classes. Uh, if they do, it raises other implications that are, I'm going to discuss in a moment. But just as a first matter, uh, your governance manual, which contains, of course, uh, clauses, uh, you know, identifying that proclamations may be declined under certain circumstances, uh, or just simply the act of declining proclamations under certain circumstances. That is constitutional. Uh, and if that has, uh, the effect of leaving, uh, some members of your community uh, wishing for a proclamation that the mayor chooses not to adopt, there's no First Amendment violation there. Now, at the same time, uh, it is also the case that in the sort of the decision making associated with evaluating a proclamation, it's pretty easy to, uh, unintentionally make comments uh, that could have more significant First Amendment, uh, impacts, or they could even get into equal protection, uh, concerns. Imagine a scenario where I think Councilmember Bowman probably has it about right. Imagine a scenario where a, a controversial proclamation, uh, is being deliberated by a council. Uh, it's certainly conceivable that, uh, during that deliberation, a council member or a group of council members, uh, could make statements that appear to make improper, uh, race, gender, sexual orientation type, uh, classification comments. And that could lead to a, a member of the community feeling like that they were being retaliated against. Uh, it would be difficult to make that claim. Uh, but, uh, we have some precedent for that. And this is a case that I mentioned about a year ago, and I just want to draw council's attention to it again. We can certainly make a copy of this available to you, but it's, it's about the best federal case on the law of municipal proclamations. And again, my first principle is by and large, you have tremendous discretion in how to manage proclamations. My second principle is, but you've got to be really savvy and cautious because there's legal peril here. So this case speaks to that. This is a case from Florida. It's from February of 2022. Uh, in this case, a, a county, uh, in Florida, uh, initially indicated that it would accept a proclamation on LGBTQ, uh, civil rights issues. Uh, the county later rescinded that statement and said, no, we won't do it because we consider that to be too politicized. The county gets sued, uh, in a, a federal civil rights case, uh, under Section 1983. Ultimately, the case was dismissed. The plaintiff couldn't bring a claim, uh, because as I said earlier, it's a question of governmental speech. The First Amendment doesn't regulate governmental speech. And when the city, I'm sorry, the county, uh, declined to accept that proclamation, it didn't, it didn't violate anyone's personal rights. So it's a great example, uh, council members, where the judge applied the First Amendment the way the law says. So in that sense, it was, it was, it was a correct result. But to get there, the county got sued and, and had to work its way through a fairly lengthy and, and, and fairly, uh, I'm sure uh, time consuming and expensive lawsuit. So, so again, I think it was Councilmember Bowman's point. I mean, you can be right on the law. Uh, but if your decision making process is cumbersome, or it's not streamlined, or it allows sort of wandering into other areas not directly related to simply voting on the proclamation, uh, you, you, you have some jeopardy there. Um, so, uh, mayor, I, I hope that gave you a little bit of primer on what we talked about the last time. I'll just mention in passing for, for council members who may be thinking about this from a comparative point of view, I will mention in passing that the battleground, uh, proclamation process is not very different from what you'll see around the state. Uh, most cities allocate the decision making on a proclamation to a single person, maybe the mayor, maybe the city manager. I can't say that you won't find councils that make the decision collectively. Uh, but that's not real common. Uh, and I think one of the reasons is because there, there is a, a, a sense that uh, too much sort of, you know, what aboutism can lead to apparent inconsistencies. And now you may be getting close to making statements that, that you really probably shouldn't, shouldn't make in, in the public record like. So again, mayor, if I, if I haven't answered your question, uh, feel free to pepper me or, or open it to council members, however you please. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? And can we get maybe the policy? Do we have the policy available to, sure? Go ahead.
Um, so I, I appreciate the amendment that was placed in the governance manual back in, what'd you say? Twenty-one, twenty-two, whenever? Um, I think the mayor, um, it, it's, I, I have seen other counselors. Like Mr. Harper had said, that it is a collection of counselors who decide um, on proclamations. That made more sense to me when I saw this, just simply because we as a council collectively represent a large, you know, citizen base. So, you know, that's religious, you know? I mean, there's, there's a reason why it says controversial, political, religious, because those are very, you know, um, controversial topics that get everybody wound up. And so I, I appreciate what, what is already in our, um, our governance manual. So I do remember, um, in that, um, that case study that Mr. Harper was talking about and, and how the fact is that the govern, um, it doesn't take away, uh, First Amendment rights because the governance, uh, the government can, well, the, the mayor in this um, situation can either adopt a proclamation or not. But once they adopt it, it's, it's theirs. It is now owned by the city. Um, in this case, it'd be city of Battleground. So we have even the opportunity to amend a proclamation that a citizen brings in. So, um, it, it just kind of, you know, I, I think that was very interesting. I'll finish with this, that, that like the mayor gets to be the sole purpose, like the sole, um, decision on this. When we as a council, we vote on everything together. So we can fully represent our citizens. And so I, I, again, I'll just say that I like what's on our governance manual. I think that the, the last, uh, board who put that amendment in had the right mind when they did that. And so I would just keep it as it is.
Mayor Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You think it's okay for a minority vote to outweigh a majority?
Well, it's in Robert's Rules of Order, so it obviously is something that happens. I mean, it's not.
Order that a minority cannot weigh a majority?
It talks about that there is a two thirds. I mean, it's not like.
Two thirds in favor. This isn't two thirds in favor.
Well, aren't you the one who put it in there? You're the one that's been sitting on council for eight plus years. So you're the one who did it. So what was your thought process?
It was put in as a knee jerk reaction to someone bringing up that it was controversial two years ago. That's what it was put in for.
So why did you vote it in? I guess I would ask. What was?
I don't know if I voted in it or not. I don't know. I'd have to look, but I don't think it's right. Because, because that's the first, the reason it was put in, that's the first time since I've been on council that anybody has spoke out against a proclamation because it was never up to the council. But I just want to make sure that those that were against it, I want to make sure that you guys are on the record saying that you approved a minority vote outruling the majority vote. Because that's what this is. Now, if we want to change it, change it to a majority vote. Then go get your four or your two thirds and, and be done. But this is one third of council can, can outvote the rest of council.
Well, I think what that is showing is that it would be controversial just for the very fact that you have close enough to half of your, your council.
That doesn't go anywhere. Tell, tell, tell me, tell me that that works anywhere else. That, because I could say that, hey, I'm running for election, a third of the people supported me. But that, but it was close enough that that tells you that they support me, I should be in. Because that's what we're throwing out here. Is, is that one third can outvote the rest? And that's exactly what it was. It's not a majority. There is nothing that we do that requires a minority to pass. Not one thing. Doesn't matter what board you sit on, what commission you sit on, what we do from this dais. If we set up here from this dais and we approved a budget with three out of the seven, never would we look at that. We'd say that's not a majority. And the people that supported you would say that's not a majority.
Well, I think why this makes a difference is we're looking specifically at what is controversial, political, and religious in nature.
Hold, hold on, hold on. Please, 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 please don't, please, please don't. Hey, please, don't make me gavel you down, please. All right? Thank you. Thank, sorry. Please, please, please. Please don't. Thank you. Thank you. Hey, that's enough. That's enough. That's enough.
But if it's controversial nature, it should be, it should be the majority. Because it's not controversial nature if a minority is saying this is controversial. If it's controversial, it's going to be four or more.
I, I think the whole controversial thing is a, a red herring. I mean, there's been a lot of things that have been controversial in our past. And I think to use that as a cop out, uh, controversial is often a, uh, a screen for bigotry, racism, sexism. You name it. Controversial has been used in all those situations. And you can't say it hasn't been because that's exactly what it's been used for. To have controversial in this, in this governance manual is an affront to every single citizen. We should, never should have put it in. Um, and if we truly are representing the people, then it shouldn't take a minority to represent the people. I'm not finished.
Oh, sorry, sir. I thought you were finished.
I think our lawyer was very kind in how he presented this. I think that this dais will wade into waters that will open us up if we continue to have this in our guiding document. I believe at the very minimum, the minor, the, the one third should be stricken. But honestly, I think the whole thing should be stricken. Uh, it was a knee jerk reaction to a one time event, which we should all know better as legislatures that legislators, that you don't make knee jerk reactions to one single situation. You take, you take some time and think about that. And we didn't think about this long enough. Shame on us. Shame on me because I think I voted for it too. So I think the whole thing should be stricken. I think the, the whole tenor of this conversation changed. Uh, it was a whole 180. Uh, it's, it's, it's very symbolic of, of this entire conversation, how the conversation started from, to where it ended up. I mean, that's, it's a 180 that, uh, somebody's going to need some new tires for. Um, Councilmember Kipers?
Thank you, mayor. I agree with the two thirds. One third majority, that doesn't make sense. There isn't anything that I know of in life where you get majority. Am I on?
There, I just.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
There isn't anything in life that I'm aware of where you go with one third of the majority to win something or to move something. Um, I, I guess I'm trying to understand, this was before my tenure here, but I'm trying to understand what moved this to be a, to, what moved proclamations away from a mayor decision in the first place?
I mean, I could speak to that if you want me to. It was, it was because, uh, one council member had an issue with the pride proclamation and thought all of council should weigh in on them. That's why essentially it was put in. I think that's a fair enough summary.
Okay. Well, yeah, obviously that was an emotional play one way or the other. Whether you agree with it or you disagree with it. As you said, mayor, time should have been taken to get to the right answer. And so I guess I'd like to see someone who's passionate about this to make a, make a motion as to what the wording should be if we're going to make a change. What does, what does that change look like?
Councilmember Overholzer?
Um, I make a motion to remove Section 21 proclamation from the governance manual in its entirety.
I have a motion on the floor to remove proclamations, Section 21 entirely. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Overholzer, second by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on striking the, uh, the entire proclamations? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Bowman. This is a new round of comments, by the way.
So you're asking to have it pulled out of the governance manual and we don't do proclamations at all?
That is correct. I believe that would be the safest route to eliminate liability fully from the mayor and the city council and the city as a whole.
I don't, I mean, I think it's a cop out. Personally, I think, I think it's a way for us to, you know, this is an election year. I think we're trying to, uh, play a little bit from the dais here and potentially set up what could happen next year, um, so that we don't have to look at this, or people don't have to look at this and say, oh, we, we don't do proclamations anymore instead of, uh, doing it the way it was before. So I will be a no vote on this. And, uh, because I think proclamations are important, and I think we should go back to the way it was before. Thank you.
Councilmember Ferrer?
Um, to mention elections, I remember specifically there was an election going on last June. And that's why I used the word controversial, political, and religious because it was only brought out onto the floor because of, there was a candidate who was on this dais, who was running for a political campaign, and he wanted this to be his platform. Those are not my chosen words. Those are words that were given to me by another member on this council. The other reason why I chose religious is because you do. The other reason why I chose religious is because you do, and which leads to controversial is because you have a huge population. That is religious in nature. And so, I mean, we don't, I know we can do proclamations on religious, but we don't. Because those would offend people. So I'm, I would, that's why I'm in favor of not doing it. If you're not religious, then don't do proclamations. If you have religious groups that feel like something is controversial to their, you know, religion, that's why I'm like, I don't want to touch it. I don't want to touch it, but I don't know that removing proclamations completely in its entirety. From this is the right thing to do either, because then we have nothing. Every other, every other city does proclamations. And like Chair said at the last meeting, okay, so we don't mem- ser- you know, maybe uh certain members on this board don't support proclamations. However, it is usually, you know, up to the mayor on how these are ran. If he wants to accept them, adopt them, not, or alter them. So I don't know if that's the right move to make is to complete re- the removal, because then there's no guidance, period. So then what? It's it's left to whatever? I don't know. There's my concern.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rushers.
So I just want to say that I am not in favor of removing proclamations. And I just also need to say that human rights are not controversial. Thank you.
Okay, uh and then um well, I appreciate the intent. Uh. Because the mayor is too cute for jail to save the mayor from any potential legal implications, this mayor is fine. To do any proclamation that meets the three part test. The reason I stopped doing them is exactly because of that. If. If the mayor is not vetoed on proclamations, I'm happy doing every single one that comes to me. That is a national day, week, or month. That means March sixteenth, National Christian Day. I'll read it. You just have to bring it. You have to be here. Uh, we've done what? Yeah, we have done one for firearms. Um, that's it. It's a three part test for me. Is it a national day, week, or month? Is the person here to receive it? What was the other one? I can't remember what the third part was now. Obviously, it's not a very good test if I can't remember. Uh, be here to receive it and submit it on, submit it.
The make it request should be four weeks in advance, or is that not it?
Uh, yeah, just, yeah, I mean, but make sure it's, you know, the person's here to receive it, and it's a national day, week, or month. Uh, which takes away, if it's already a national day, week, or month, that should take the controversy out of it, right? Because you, it's already been vetted. I mean, it's not like we're. You know, national week of, you know, beat your dog. I mean, that's not a national week, so you, there there's, the controversial stuff has been vetted. And and it's passed through, through another body. Um. As far as, you know, so the religious thing, I don't even, that shouldn't be in there either. We should celebrate our religious communities. The amount of work that some of these religious communities do for our seniors. It's amazing. I know G- uh Councilmember Kuiper's church is very active in helping the seniors. Um, and doesn't do it for any recognition, so they're probably mad at me for even saying it. Um. So while I, while I understand where you're coming from, I I just. Yeah, I I think it's probably like, do you have anything on this motion, or is it? Okay, Deputy Mayor Bowman.
So, Councilmember Ferrer, the the, you brought up a good point when you, when you take this away, because I'm going to give you two examples of. The most. Probably the, two of the most attended meetings that we had had to do with proclamations. And they were um. When we, we made Ben. From, from uh Brett Myers. Yeah, Ben Lemmons, when when we gave him a proclamation, making him the honorary honorary ambassador of the city and giving him a key. This room was packed. And um when we did, uh when we recognized the futures programs and the um, the um. Special Olympics for, and they came in and and this room was packed and. You know, when, when, when you take those away, because we don't want to do one thing. Um, so we'll just take it all away. You miss out on those opportunities as as a council to do what we should be doing, and that's to recognize. Those things, those people, those organizations, those things in the city that are good. And and that that people are doing and and, you know, there's, there's things that I may not believe are good. Um. You know, but it, but there's, there's a portion of the city that that do and and. The mayor reads a proclamation, they support it, they 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 put it out there. Um, we used to do a lot more. Uh, we had mayors that in the past that uh would do proclamations for about anything. You know, they would just go down the list and let's do a proclamation for this. And we changed that up a little bit, that they had to be requesting it, and we weren't going to read it if there wasn't someone here. That type of stuff, so it wasn't just a. We want this so that we can put it on our wall or put it in the paper that we got a proclamation from the city of Battleground. So those, those things would go away when you, when you wipe out the whole thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, great discussion. Um. I would. Prefer proclamations be taken out, and I, in. My response to that would be. For those cases that you just mentioned. They can come to the council and we can acknowledge them, thank them. Um, I don't think they need a proclamation for that to make them feel. Uh, relevant or important. When you do something, we had the Rotary come. They came, we acknowledged what they did, thanked them. They working on a park. I don't think we need a proclamation for everything. If it's already a designated week, they've got that. It's it's whatever, if it's federal, whatever, they've got that week. Um, they, I don't think we need to second it and third it. Um, by all means, people do stuff for Battleground, we should invite them, come in, thank them. I think that is acknowledgement enough. I do not see the relevance for a proclamation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion on the table to completely remove item or what would be? Item, light them, line number twenty one, whatever uh proclamations, that one, the one that was on the screen. Section twenty one, there we go. Uh, struggling with words today. Uh, it's been. Motion has been seconded, seeing no further discussions. All in favor of removing proclamations, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails two to five.
Three to four. Yeah.
Oh, you voted two? Oh, three to four? Sorry, oh, my bad.
No worries.
Yeah. Can can we bring up the? Like to make a motion that we remove items two and three from section twenty one subsection A.
Second.
We remove sections two and three, I, I, and I, 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 from proclamations twenty one, section A. Motion has been seconded by Deputy Mayor Bowman. Any discussion?
Are you sure you want? Section three removed? Proclamations can be issued at the discretion of the mayor and maybe.
Oh, true, good point. Yeah, I will re- reframe that, just, just two.
Second. Second for two.
Second allows it. So section twenty one subsection A, item two. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
I didn't get your, Councilmember Davis, did you vote nay? Uh, motion passes four to three. Is there any other motions on proclamations before we move on? All right, seeing none, we will head along to. Transportation. Engineer Hersick.
Good evening, council. Give me a second. I'll get my presentation up. All right. You all know this is my favorite time of year when we talk about six year TIP. Um.
Sidewalks, right?
Uh, this year will be the twenty twenty six, twenty thirty one, six year TIP. Um, so question always comes up is why do we do this? So RCW requires it. It requires all cities to have an annually update their six year transportation program by July first of each year. And then it's required for both state and federal grants, so if we want a grant, um we either have to have the project in there or add it after we receive the grant. Um, the layout of the six year TIP, so there's no order directed by state law. Um, the city's always had a preference that the funded projects are listed first and then non funded projects are after. Uh, changes from last year, so new project on there, the Old Town East Main Street improvements. Based on the five hundred thousand that's coming from the state, uh we're proposing to add that project. And then projects proposed to be removed would be the intersection of fifteenth and Main. And the twentieth avenue pathway, and both of those will be because um construction will be obligated this year, so. Um. There's no longer a need for those two projects to be in there. Uh, the next steps is city council will hold a public hearing, assuming that um the public hearing is set at this meeting and. Uh, we'd recommend the June sixteenth, and then there'd be a motion that same meeting. Are any questions for me?
Go ahead. Oh, wait, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Um, Mark, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, number five on there is the Southwest, um. Rasmussen Boulevard signal is, when it says signal, are you talking that it's still in the process of a roundabout or?
Correct, that'll be a.
Signal is just a term?
It'll be a roundabout, and actually I'll update that. Um, I think in the transportation plan it had it as signal, and that's changed as the process moved on, so. It's just a carryover for that, but I'll correct it on the final one.
Okay, and um. Number thirty for South Parkway and Rasmussen, what type of improvement are you talking about at that? Because I know we put in the four way stop. Is there something else going on?
Yeah, so for that one, um, we are collecting mitigation funds for it because it's at a concurrency failures. And the ultimate improvement would be a traffic signal.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, thanks for that, and I just wanted to say, you know, since I've been on council. Um, there's been a little bee in my bonnet on uh number two. Northwest Fifth Street, I have always opposed it. Um, I want to go on record that I still oppose it, and I know people say horses left. The barn or through the gate or whatever the saying is. Um, but I still feel that it's important that I state that I oppose it. Um, there's many residents who oppose it. I never really understood it. That being said, I just wanted that to, um, I mean, I I understand everything else you answered my questions. But um Northwest Fifth Street behind the school is not one of my favorites. Thank you.
I I can add some context to that if. Um. I think there's been a lot of people that have had some issues with that, and uh I know our engineering staff met with the school and they're looking at. Possible alternatives that may not be as. Uh, how might we say?
Impactful.
That's what I was going to use, but. So uh. The the design hasn't been set yet, so your concern is well noted, and I think. The engineering staff is working hard on to try to make that. Was a very productive meeting. I was very happy with the last one we had with school staff. Any other questions? This does require a motion. To set a public hearing for the June sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Regular city council meeting to hear public testimony regarding the six year transportation improvement plan for the years twenty twenty six or twenty thirty one.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, I'll give it to Councilmember Overholzer for the second. To set the public hearing for June sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then you're up with parks.
Thanks again, council. Give me a second. I'll get my park rules on up. Need a clicker or something that makes this go faster. All right, park rules. Um. So tonight, we're going to talk about uh park rules, so I'll talk about existing rules, both what's on our signage that we display at a park. What's in our code, talk a little bit about park hours, compare it to some other cities, um talk about changes. We'll talk about general rules. Uh, I'll have a summary. I'll get into um Parks Board and their recommendations and then answer any questions. Uh, so right there is what we have in our parks, our rules sign. Um, essentially, the rules are as follows. Uh, parking designated spaces only. Uh, for the use of alcohol, it's not allowed. Uh, smoking is allowed in designated areas only. I will say, though, everyone I talk to, no one knows of any designated areas, so I think functionally, there is no smoking in our parks. Um, but currently, that is.
I think those are in Ridgefield.
Um. Fires and barbecues are only allowed uh in portable barbecues. Those are okay. Uh, no fireworks are allowed in city parks. Uh, dogs are allowed, um but you have to have them leashed and you must clean up the mess. Uh, wildlife, you may not harm or feed them. Uh, goods, no selling without permit. And then special events permit um as necessary, and they allow uh events and some bending of the rules essentially. And right now, our hours are dawn to dusk. Uh, if you actually look in the code, which is BGMC eight eighteen. Um, they talk about not permitted activities that are hazardous, and there's things such as practicing or playing in a way that can harm others. Uh, the fires except in barbecues and negligent operation of motor vehicle. They talk about uh not permitted activities interfering with others. Those are such things as activities conducted for private gain without permit. Operation of a public address system, music without permit. Operation of a drone, though there is an exception for the police and and other emergency services. And then non permitted activities that interfere with others continue, so. Operation of a motor vehicle that causes harm, overnight parking without permit, posting signs, interfering with reserved areas. Uh, soliciting donation, hawking goods without permit, alcohol consumption without permit, and then firearms and fireworks. Um. There's not permitted activities that are not in conformance with general rules of behavior. Uh, these are things such as failure to stay on trails, leashing your pets. Um, not throwing garbage away properly, harming property, plants, animals, removing, destroying park amenities. Urinating, defecating, or spitting, except in bathrooms. Uh, swimming, bathing, or waiting, except where designated, driving motor vehicles, except where designated. And then a couple other things are no smoking, except where designated, and parks opened on to dusk as we've discussed. Uh, so just to kind of give a comparison specifically for ours uh to some other jurisdictions, so again, ours is dawn to dusk. Um, there's exemptions for permitted activities. So looking back at last year, um what dawn to dusk would mean, so for the shortest period of time. That would have been seven ten to five P M. And for the longest period of time, it would have been four forty one A M to nine forty one P M. Um. Canvas does one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset. Um, and there's exemptions for, again, permitted activities in parking lots. Longview has kind of split depending on the time of year, so Labor Day through May thirty first, it's five to ten. And then June first through Labor Day is five to eleven. Um, there's exemptions, so they allow ped crossings through their parks, and then some parks are open. Looks fine on my screen. See what happened here. Oh. Liz?
It wasn't me.
Here, I'll just keep going. Um. Oh, now it's reconnecting me. I don't know what's going on. All right, I'll, like I said, I'll just keep going. Um, some parks are open twenty four seven for specific activities uh such as boat launch. Dog park and running or jogging. Um. Um, for City of Portland, they're open five to midnight. They have exemptions again for ped crossings, um and then other certain things. Uh, Ridgefield does seven A M to nine P M. Vancouver does five A M to ten P M, and Washougal does daylight hours. Um, so for us, should general, should BG change our current park hours? And then kind of uh, we have some specific facilities that have lighting to them, such as the skate park. And then the new pickleball and basketball courts at Kewanas will have that, so. And then the new pickleball and basketball courts at Kewanas will have that. So should they have hours that are outside of the general hours for the city? Um, for general rules, there's a couple of things that other jurisdictions have that's not in battlegrounds code. Uh, Camus and Vancouver have discussed having no horses. Uh, most have um, discussion about not golfing. Most codes have discussion about no throwing sports. Uh, Camus and Portland have no model airplanes or model rockets. Longview has a code about no exotic animals. And then Portland specifically allows geocaching in its parks. Um, so the question is, do we want to add any of these and anything else that I haven't talked about? So kind of the summary is, what do we want to do with park hours? And then do we want to add, delete, or modify any general park rules? As I mentioned, this went to the Parks Board. Uh, so they talked about hours and they do want to change. Uh, so for general, their recommendation was six AM to 10:00 PM. They thought for the pickleball and basketball courts at Kewanas, uh, eight AM to nine PM. And then the skate park at Fairgrounds, seven AM to 10:00 PM for that facility. And a couple of minor things on the general rules. Um, they did want to add geocaching as an allowed use. Obviously you can't damage uh, amenity to do that. And then an outright ban of smoking and vaping, um, which again, we pretty much already have, but to make it official. That is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Bowman? Can you bring that last slide back up?
I think Rob's running it for me.
So can we, I mean, when is the pickleball court's gonna be open?
In terms of the construction being complete, uh, they're getting pretty darn close. It should be another few weeks.
Because for, at least for me, I, the rest of council may be fine with it, but for me, I would rather wait till it opens to find out what the impact is. Because I've heard from a lot of pickleball players that said that sound wall's just, it's a pretty wall. You know, um, that there's gonna be a lot of noise there. And so we may want to look at that differently after the fact. And if we say, you know, uh, eight to nine right now. You know, and I know it's got lights and stuff like that, but, but the neighbors could be the issue there.
Yeah, and I think Parks Board had that same concern and that's kind of why unlike the skate park where they have a little bit earlier, skate park doesn't have a lot of neighbors. So there wasn't as big a concern about that being earlier. So they had that same thought and one of the things we discussed is making it wouldn't say temporary, but kind of a trial basis. They thought eight was a good starting time because they had the same concern, you know? That may be too late, it may be too early, you know, those sorts of things. So that was kind of their thought as a good starting point.
Yeah, cause I would, I would like to see how it does first and see if we get any complaints. We may not get any and then you know, let it be what it is. But if you're someone that's working shift work or any of that kind of stuff, and you just hear paddles, that could be an issue, but thank you.
Councilmember Ferrer?
So, yeah, I, um, hours look fine to me. Um, pickleball, like, um, he just mentioned eight to nine without knowing. I would be more interested in making it just to start out eight to eight. And to see if there's any complaints from there and then we can talk about possibly moving it. Um, question for that first slide that you showed with the, the rules of the parks, is that currently located at park? So people can see that sign?
Yeah, that's our current design of our current sign. We've held off ordering more to deal with the hours issue, just to make sure, because we knew this was coming up. So, um, I think some of the older signs are still out now. We've got a couple of places where that new sign is, but until we decided the hours issue, we weren't gonna order more.
Okay, we don't have to put on there like the, maybe put on there somewhere, um, the battleground municipal code eight point 18 or something. So people can look further into that and know that there is more consequences. This is an actual.
I mean, we could. There's nothing that says you have to. There's nothing that says you can either.
Okay, um, I have some questions about the pickleball. Some of them thankfully have already been addressed by our um, city manager. Thank you for your time. Um, like one of them was um, making sure that we are putting in mature trees. Um, so in case those neighbors are listening, they are putting in mature trees, 15 gallons. So that's about six feet of your cypress. Um, and um, I asked some questions and they said that it grows about two, two and a half feet per year. So that'll get up there pretty good. Um, I'm wondering though, I, we, I left your office, uh, the city manager's office with concerns about the drainage there at the park. You have currently, and so I'm wondering if any of, you've gotten an update from that Chris, or maybe you can fill me in whoever. The, the water spouts, the downspouts, they stop about a foot off the ground and they just kind of shoot out. So they don't gradually go down. They just kind of look like they shoot out. And the area back there behind the pickleball wall is something that has already been a concern of the neighbors that it's, you know, a wetland back there. It gets, you know, a lot of water. And I'm just concerned that is this going to be a contributing factor to that? Or I was looking to see if we could, um, I think we had talked about maybe looking into, can we get those spouts into the uh, the water basin or the catch basin? So it goes out into the street instead of flooding the back, the neighbor's backyard. Did you get any updates on that one? Nothing yet?
Yeah, it's been addressed. I don't know the exact solution, but the project manager went out and they took care of it.
They took care of it? Do you know what that?
I, I don't know what the solution was. No.
Okay, so could, um, yeah, I guess I'll, maybe you could have her call me or something so I can get that information or we can bring that forward because that was water drainage. Everybody knows battleground has water drainage issues. Yeah, that's all I have. So I'm uh, interested in the, the eight to eight for the pickleball right now. Oh, another thing is, um, so when I walked back there, you have the sound wall. And behind there, there's like a little space, like I just mentioned, for the water to go in. But there's also a space for like your, some criminal activity, I guess, talking to the neighbors. That's already been something going on where kids are hanging out back there and doing things they shouldn't be doing. So I'm wondering, have we looked into possibly getting a fence or a gate? Um, so we can kind of keep criminal activity because, yeah, it looks superb to keep you out of the eyesight at night. You won't be seen by the light or cops driving by. Anything on, and so that's just a concern I'm raising at this point. The council or staff wants to do with that.
Councilmember Kipers?
Thank you, Mark. I had a question, um, made a comment earlier about the dogs. It's actually on here. Dogs, leash, cleanup mess. Do we have, um, do all of our parks have the little disposal things with bags or how, how, we have an expectation. I always take my bags, but sometimes I'm caught without a bag.
I know Ops has been adding a ton of those all over the place. I can't say for sure they have it at every single park, but that's ultimately the goal is to get them as many as we can out there.
Okay, yeah, I think that's important. Good, yeah. I just didn't know if all of them, if that's what our expectation is.
Yeah, we ordered.
I don't think it's our expectation that we supply everyone's bags, but it does happen. And if, you know, if that's an expectation, I think that's helpful.
Interestingly enough, it's really a stormwater, um, goal related to our permit. So, um, you know, the more we can keep that out of the system, the less gets to the stormwater system. So
Good, good.
It's been a project related to that. And like I said, we, if not all, it's very close to getting to all of them.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, can we go back to the hours screen? I think it was the last slide. I, I believe, yeah, I believe it's one of the last ones where it just states the recommended hours from uh, faceboard. There we go. Yeah, my, my only hindrance on this is, um, general being six to 10, the skate park being seven to 10, our two lit areas are going to be the most restricted times. Um, it's the only lit covered areas in the park. So it's the one place where people can actually be out of the rain, undercover, playing in the dark. And we're gonna restrict those uh, more than we would the skate park in the general. So I'd be a fan of whatever we decide the general park hours are, whether it be six to 10, seven to nine, whatever that is. Dust to dawn with an hour on either end. It'd just be consistent with the pickleball and basketball courts, because I'm, I'm looking forward to being out there this winter in the rain shooting hoops. And uh, I don't want to be restricted with the time being different than the rest of the park. So that just doesn't make sense to me.
The only thing I'll add to that is just, it was again, the noise that kind of led to that being different.
Real quick, there was neighbors who were complaining that one, it was dusk to dawn or dawn to dusk in Kewanas. They would have somebody sitting in their guitar at five AM playing with no, you know, concern about the neighbors who don't get up at five AM. And they could hear it right through their bedroom window.
So I'm hearing council kind of all over the place on hours. Can we just start on maybe rules? Are, are we okay with faceboard recommendation on rules? Is there anything anybody wants to add to that? Subtract, go ahead, Councilmember Overholzer.
Yeah, sorry. I forgot about the rules. I was so stuck on the hours. I love the idea of geocaching. Um, as long as it doesn't include damage or modification as it's stated here. I think that's such a cool idea. And um, I've been at parks and, and been in groups that were into that kind of thing and it was really neat. So love that. Yeah, there's no point in, I guess we could make an all-out ban on smoking, maybe, but we, like you said, already basically have that rule. But yeah, definitely geocaching added, uh, and no horses. Can we just put that in there? No horses.
Yeah, I know. I'm hating on the horses. I'm sorry, everybody.
There's a joke there. All right, uh, Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Mr. Overholzer just, just brought up is we're going into the the time of year where it's gonna stay light till almost 10 o'clock. And so maybe instead of putting the hours, uh, just, just run with the general through the summer and see, see if we get complaints, see if we get, uh, you know, how many, how many people are out there at, um, my, my only concern would be that you have pickleball players wanting to play till midnight because we got lights.
They're more likely to be playing at six AM than midnight, I think.
Yeah, well, but if we just did, if we did it from, you know, uh, yeah, pickleball at six AM would be tough though. Yeah. So I don't know what you do if, if you just do it where we run through the summer at 10:00 PM or dusk and kind of see what happens. And then as we go into the winter months, when, and, and that's the same thing with the skate park. Those kids are skating out there still at nine 30, 10 o'clock at night without really lights yet. So, um, the complaints that we usually get for are more in the winter time to be able to go past four 30, five o'clock. Thank you.
Councilmember DeRosers?
I'd like to keep the hours as is for now until we actually have the pickleball. So we don't have to adjust and get new signs and everything. Um, we may learn that it's not a good idea to have the hours that we have. So I'd just like to be able to see what it's like before we make that decision. And then for the general rules, I'm excited for the geocaching. And then I'm fine with outright banning smoking and vaping. Thank you.
Uh, just for clarification, so you want to keep it from dawn to dusk?
For now, until we have an idea of what it, what it's like.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
May I add one thing, just a point to help me. So the, the basketball court and the pickleball court will be on a timer. So I do need a specific time to turn the lights on.
Well, and I have, I don't think dawn works for pickleball. They'll, they'll be there at four AM. So, um, I, I think we probably need to change that. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Is there a rule, um, from the city about mowing lawns or roofing? I see a lot of people complaining, quit mowing your lawns. And somebody else says, well, there's a rule that eight AM or whatever. So is there a city? You're shaking your head.
Yes.
What is the time?
It's eight, eight AM, isn't it for construction? Or seven AM?
Give me a second. I couldn't look at it. I think Rob may have it.
I don't think there's a lawn mowing one, but like if somebody's, if, remember when they were, when they were building next to uh, the senior facility on 20th? They reached out and I thought it was seven AM.
Off the top of my head, it's seven to nine weekday and eight to nine on a weekend, but I just want to confirm that.
I'm not sure if that's construction or like mowing your yard. I
I thought it was different if it was the if it was the homeowner doing it.
I mean, I think I, I was just curious because if you want to stay consistent, um, and if a noise is an issue and that's why they put the noise issue in for roofers or construction, do you go that way with pickleball? I'm not saying anything about ending time because I think if it's staying late, later in the summer, we gotta let these people play.
Okay.
Um, so that's my only concern. Like if it's, if it's seven for noise, then why can't pickleball be swooped up in there with basketball for noise?
Councilmember Davis, to your point, it actually is in the mini code, chapter 9.42, public disturbance noise. And in paragraph B, number two, it talks about the creation of frequent repetitive or continuous sounds in contin- in connection with certain activities, including uh, yard work, lawn mowers, garden tools, agriculture machinery. It is basically allowed between the hours of eight AM and eight PM.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's just something to think about if you want to keep it consistent. Pickleball, roofing.
Uh, Councilmember Ferrer, sorry.
Um, here's my second round.
No worries. I was, I had a thought and I lost it. So that was on me.
Uh, my only concern is just with the pickleball, because I have, you know, I've talked to all of the neighbors. I wanted to be respectful because I wanted them to have a voice in this. I did knock on their doors. I got to talk to them. They were very open, you know, with the idea of, you know, I mean, as well, you know, aside from the, the medical issues that they have, so that you can't, can't please everybody, but I think that he would be understanding of the eight AM to eight PM. Um, and then even we did talk, I think, um, Mr. Ferrier, we did talk about maybe the lighting could go until nine. And so I did ask one of the neighbors if I would be open to that. And they were, they were okay with that one. I would just like us to be thinking about those neighbors who bedrooms and they're, you know, are going to be right next to the park when we make these, these hours. I'm okay with everything else, but I just want to be very respectful to these neighbors who pickleball was not in there when they moved. They bought their house and been paying taxes, you know, a long time ago. So, um, I would just respectfully request that you guys think of that for the pickleball hours before you make your final decision.
Okay, um, I would agree with Councilmember Overholzer and I think maybe the basketball, maybe 10. And I'm hearing council keep pickleball like at nine or even eight is what I'm hearing, but for summer, maybe, I mean, I think we need to be responsive to that. That's what I'm hearing. So I think council shouldn't get too hung up on, on when it ends and just commit to being responsive to, to any major issues there. But I'm kind of looking for consensus for Mark for for pickleball on when to end that. And I would just counsel that, you know, these may be temporary, so don't get too hung up on it. Can we land on the faceboard recommendations?
I move we, can I make a motion? I move we accept the faceboard recommendations. They gave it a lot of thought. I went to that meeting. I heard a lot of the same comments. I think they're reasonable. We can adjust if we need to. And I, that's my recommendation is go with those recommendations.
I can.
And do you need a motion, Mark? Are you just looking for direction? That wasn't?
So this is in an ordinance and so it has to go through public hearing and all of that. So I just kind of need general consensus so I can write the ordinance to match what you're looking for.
I think the motion was to bring forward an ordinance reflecting these faceboard recommendations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was exactly what I was trying to say.
That's what I heard. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for that robust discussion, council. It's the Mark show still.
All right. I don't even know what topic we're on at this point, so.
This is ordinance number 20. This is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero four, state route speed limits.
So, um, in front of you as the ordinance that went through public hearing at the last meeting, um, it essentially sets the, what I'll call the aspirational speed limits for five oh two and five oh three. Uh, five oh two being thirty miles per hour and five oh three at forty miles per hour. Um, as, uh, the Wash Dot members discussed, that kind of gives them the freedom to, uh, change the speed limits as improvements happen that justify lowering the speed. So, um, I'd look for a motion to approve that ordinance.
That, that's what's in front of us. Yeah.
Move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five.
No, wait, hold on. Sorry. We need the clerk to read the ordinance title. Please.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero four and ordinance amending battleground municipal code title 10, vehicles and traffic, chapter 10.08 miscellaneous traffic regulations, section 10.08.030, speed limit on state highway five oh two and section 10.08.040, speed limit on state highway five oh three.
Now we can open for motion. I have a motion on the floor from Deputy Mayor Bowman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Overholzer. I did notice in the news that they now allow a 10 mile an hour speed limit for shared roads. So I just wanted to throw that out so that we could add complexity to the situation. Um, any further discussion on this ordinance? Go ahead.
So I understand that the language on the ordinance is saying thirty miles per hour all the way from five oh three to the city limits, which would be all the way to 92nd. Now I understand that we discussed that at the last meeting, that would be, we're doing this so we can, um, so WASD as, you know, um, development and things that come in, the roundabout things that will change the behavioral, behavior of these drivers, they'll be able to change the speed. I just think it's weird. So please explain to me why we would do an ordinance, which is going to make it so it's enforceable. And yet we're not going to have that signage yet. So we're going to have the signage as it is, but we're going to have an ordinance that the police can enforce that says thirty miles per hour, but it's not going to change until after the development. No. Okay. Please help me understand this.
That's, it won't be enforced by the police. It's just, it is the minimum and then WASD will eventually get there. The signs will be posted as they allow per development like you.
Right. Got that. It was just the language in the ordinance doesn't, it explains it in our, you know, in our, um,
It, the speed posted and speed ticketed will not be different on the road with this ordinance, if that's, if that's your concern.
Yes, I, to maybe explain it differently. So ultimately because it's a state highway, it's the state laws that control the enforcement and what the rules are going under. So we're essentially establishing this saying, this is ultimately what we want to see. And part of Wash Dot's process is they look to the jurisdiction to see what they want to have, you know, the speed limit set. But ultimately it's up to the Secretary of Transportation to set it based on state law. And so yes, our ordinance isn't consistent with what it will be signed, but ultimately our ordinance doesn't control what's actually there. It's state law and the, and what Wash Dot does.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Mark's too nice to say it, but I don't think staff wants to go through this discussion again. So I know that this ordinance is not what everybody wanted. Uh, I know some people want it higher, some people want it lower. Um, I hope that we can come together and, and, and compromise on this. So I'm looking forward. Any other comments? Sure, shoot.
When are we going to get the WASD update on the thirty-five miles per hour?
On the third. I mean.
Third?
At Dollar's Corner.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. What did I think? Oh, okay. Just assume, figured everybody knew what that meant because we're all so hungry for it.
So we had our, I think it's quarterly meeting with Wash Dot today. And, um, a couple of things they mentioned is they're looking at July-ish for the speed limits on five oh two. We're coming back, I believe on the sixteenth to talk about the five oh three corridor. And then they're already under process with the Dollar's Corner, um, doing kind of, I think a similar thing they did on five oh two. So that's already in their queue. I don't have a timeframe for that, but, um, Carly did say it was in their queue.
Thank you.
We need to, when that speed limit goes, we need courtesy of battleground city council on it. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing that all in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you for all the work on that, Mark.
Mm-hmm.
And team and WASD. Administrative reports?
No reports this evening, Mayor.
Council communications. I just have one. Um, you guys all have a paper copy of the review. Can you please get that done and put it back in my mailbox before the next meeting if possible? And then review committee will meet, uh, try to summarize that. And then we will all meet to create a document that we all agree on. That is the hope. So, um, if you could, please fill those out. That would be very helpful. It's, you, you have a printed copy and you have electronic copy. Uh, I don't know any other copies I can give you. All right.
Yeah, don't email them.
Oh, yeah. When you're finished, yeah, please print it out and put it in my mailbox. Yeah. Yeah, don't, yeah, try not, yeah. Because what, what we want to put, the reason for that is we want the review to come from all of us. So that's the reasoning behind that. Okay. So, uh, we're going to take a five minute break, but then after that pursuant to RCW forty-two dash thirty dash one ten, parentheses, one, parentheses, be the city council will enter an executive session to consider the selection of a site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase from public knowledge regarding such consideration would likely cause an increased price. The session will last thirty minutes commencing at eight fifty and ending at nine twenty with no action to follow. I don't trust you guys to get it done.
Extending till 9:35pm. Thank you. Good. Extending till 9:35pm. Thank you. We're 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 good.